Okay, good evening. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood, Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, May 27, 2021, beginning at approximately 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers at City Hall, located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is called to order at 7:04. We will now receive any communication from the public or committee liaisons to the commission to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects be placed on a later regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Please note that public comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person. And Ms. Bennett will be the timekeeper. Is that true as of now, correct?
It is, if I can work this.
Okay. Out of the respect of those speaking during the public comment period, please refrain from any outbursts or interruptions which could disrupt the meeting and discourage others from speaking. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing no one. Next is our Consent Agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting held Thursday, April 22, 2021?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next is our one action item tonight. Consideration and possible action regarding the partial preliminary plat of Avalon at Friendswood, Section 1, a private subdivision being 68.101 acres of land out of the Mary Fabro survey, A69, in the City of Friendswood, located in Gallaston County, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Aubrey, please provide the staff summary.
Yes, sir. I think you all remember that we've approved this preliminary and final plat already, but the original was just with 50 lots due to the limited access that they had to Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. The agreement at that time was for Taylor Morrison to come in and build a portion of the Boulevard on the West Ranch side to gain access to their initial 50 lots. But construction of the remainder of the Boulevard has proceeded well, and the Boulevard may actually be complete before the subdivision is. So instead of recording the plat that we had previously with all the reserves for future residential lots and then recording that and having to come back and do a replat, they're going to go ahead and just plat the full 105 lots for the entire subdivision. So they did have to start over with a preliminary plat, and then you'll see a final plat again. All the water sewer and drainage for the entire subdivision was being installed already, so no changes will be made there. It was just creating all 105 lots.
I see representatives from the applicant here. Would you like to make any comments at this time?
Bobby Skinner for Taylor.
You could step to the podium and state your name again one more time.
Bobby Skinner with Taylor Morrison, and I'm simply here to answer any questions that you guys might have. I think Aubrey summed it up very well.
Okay, well, thank you. You might want to just hang out right there. I'm sure there will be a question or two.
Can do that.
Commissioner Sassen.
Yeah, I just had one question. I don't know if it's for Aubrey or for you, Mr. Skinner. The way the drawing shows, it shows the boundaries that include one entrance, but not the other entrance. If you pull up the drawing, you can kind of see the second of the three drawings that they have with this. And so I didn't understand. It seems like we either want to show that this is complete for the 150 lots, that it would have both entrances in service. So that was my confusion. I don't think there's going to be an issue here. It just seems like it might be not reflecting. Go down one more. Okay, so if you zoom in on the center there.
So?
Yeah, that area there. It shows that one entrance, very nice. It shows the other one someday we're going to have, and that it's not built. And so the drawing doesn't reflect the understanding that I think you're describing. That's my only issue.
Or is it just a way of reading the drawing?
And more likely, I'm reading the drawing wrong, and that's happened before.
Well, I think what you're saying there is our Boulevard entrance.
Right.
That will tie into Friendswood Lake Boulevard that is on its way.
So you are building the first little section there, is that correct?
Yes, what you see right there, I'm building it.
Yeah, you're building that little section. You're not building the other section, but we need that other section has to be completed prior to these lots being given a final permit of occupancy, I presume.
That is correct.
Yeah, the Boulevard will have to be constructed and accepted by council before we record this portion, so.
Okay, so we're all covered. It's just a little confusing to me that it's saying 150 lots, we're good. We don't really have another entrance, but we're okay on that. It kind of reflects something that's a little different than the understanding. But if we have provisions in place to prevent the wrong thing from happening here, I guess I'm okay.
And we understand that. We waited until this point in time where we saw the bulk of the paving go down on the Boulevard before initiating this action, so that we had a comfort level that absolutely the Boulevard's going to be down before we are. And as Aubrey said earlier, I think it makes it infinitely simpler for everybody if we record all of it.
I appreciate where you're going. I just want to make sure the drawings represent what we're actually agreeing to and are not in conflict, that's all. And I think what I'm seeing, and I trust Aubrey, I trust you a lot, that we'll be okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Aubrey. Can you share anything, please?
Yeah, so I like the development. The only question, I think I saw something that had been completed, but the deal between Lake City and Friendswood's complete on this?
Yes, sir.
That's really my only question.
Commissioner Park?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Mann? Commissioner Perry? No, that's it as well for me. So thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Shows to be unanimous. Next on our agenda are the discussion items, with the first item being Discussion on Possible Amendments to Appendix C, Zoning Ordinance, Section 7Q3, Area and Height Exceptions Regarding Exceptions for the Maximum Building Height. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So this is just a discussion. It's a new discussion item, new and fresh to the agenda tonight. I know we reviewed the building height ordinances last year, a lot of last year, regarding the exceptions to allow the church to put the cross on top of the building in the downtown district. So we spent a lot of time, and I think we kind of got caught up in the exceptions for attachments to the tops of the buildings. And so this discussion item is to consider whether or not we might be interested in allowing taller buildings in some of the other commercial zoning districts, such as Community Shopping Center and Office Park District. So 40-foot height is the maximum height in those other districts. It does have some exceptions. If you are setback from a residential district and meet a 45-degree angle rule, then you can go up to a maximum of 50 feet if you're adjacent to a residential zoning district. But in the case that a building might be further away from a residential district, do we want to consider looking at some alternatives or additional exceptions to allow taller buildings in our commercial districts? Obviously, we're getting pretty tight on land. And we've got, in your backup material, I did provide a few that we've already approved. So the assisted living center that's going in over on Thomas Trace, it was approved with a specific use permit. And so that was approved several years ago. Clear Creek Community Church is exceeding the 40 feet, just a little bit, like 45 feet, but they have enough property to where they can meet the additional setback requirements, and it's not an issue at all for them. So we do have another application that's coming to you soon for a taller building in the CFC or OPD district. And so that's just the discussion we wanted to get started tonight, maybe kind of get ahead of reviewing this ordinance.
So saying it back to you, so what you're at least presenting for discussion is going up from that 40 feet that's there now up to a maximum of 50 feet. But depending on only in commercial districts and no matter how the distance is between those buildings and residential, it would be a limiting factor.
Yes, sir. Yeah, if we wanted to explore some possible exceptions, if they had increased setbacks from either just single-family residential or if we want to include, like Garden Home District is technically multifamily, but it's still single-family units, so what all we would... We're sensitive to developers that want to do the taller buildings, but we also want to protect our residents that are adjacent to commercial districts. We don't want tall buildings next to neighborhoods, looking in people's backyards and things like that.
Now, ask one clarifying question, then I'll turn it over and let everybody else go. But you're still thinking, at least in what you've looked at so far, you're thinking of matching up to the downtown district as far as maximum height? Or what maximum height are you thinking? Or is it just depending upon how much property you have and how far you are from residential? What's your thinking?
It could be, well, we weren't really... So the established max is 40 for CFC. But if we wanted to establish an exception, so if you wanted a 70-foot tall building, maybe you need to be 140 feet away from residential zoning or something to that nature.
Okay, do something for this question. I'll start with Commissioner Perry.
If we're in a situation where we're not covered through the exceptions, then you still have the SUP law, right? PUD?
Or PUD, I'm sorry. I think we're trying to get away from people having to do SUPs and PUDs just for one exception. So the thought was if we could ride it in and not have any major unintended consequences, that we could just ride in the exception.
So we have the discussion today, and this goes to the subcommittee for consideration? Yeah, I don't think I'm against looking at it, if that's what you're asking. I think the height is probably arbitrary. We're getting the same debate we had in the past over what's the right height. So 40 versus 50 is probably not that big of a deal. I think it's the use that I'm more concerned about. When you put a 50, 60, 70-foot building in there, and traffic density, all of those are the things that I'm more concerned about than the specific height. Also stating the obvious, where you don't want residents having to look at a tower. I just keep thinking of the high-rise at Clear Lake, that thing popped up. I mean, that's, either you love it or hate it, I guess. I'm assuming we're going to have a 50-foot condo here, but, you know. So no, not against looking at it, but those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Sassen.
So I really agree with what you're saying, Aubrey, of trying to avoid a PUD for anybody who wants to put a building like this in. We should establish the rules and establish what the game plan is so developers can actually plan, as opposed to let's put it in and see if we get an exception and work through city council. I just think that's a wrong way to do this. And so Commissioner Metrager and I kind of bounced some things back and forth on some of this stuff about what would be the right thing to do. What are you really worried about? Why wouldn't you allow a 70-foot building outside of the downtown area? And my personal concern is if it's a single-family residential lot nearby, I wouldn't want people staring into my backyard at the swimming pool from an office building. That would be something I think would not be right. And so walked around the existing 60 or 65-foot, I guess is how tall the Tanos building is over there, and stepped out how far away you had to be to kind of be covered. And my personal thought, and I want to hear everybody else's view, is if you're two to one, if you were from the edge of the building to the nearest SFR property line, if you were twice as far as the height, it's not great, but it's probably reasonable to allow that instead of one to one, where you're at a 45, kind of looking down into people's private stuff. Then I was thinking about multifamily residential, but I'm not sure multifamily gets the same presumption of privacy that a single-family residential does. So my thought was, just as a throw-out idea, if you were two to one from the edge of the building to the nearest SFR or maybe Garden Home District as well, that you would allow up to what we currently allow in downtown, which is 70 feet, I guess. And so I think part of what's going on here is people have seen the new Tanos building, and I've gotten to go in there a couple of times. It's very, very nice, and I think it's really helping Friendswood. And so we don't want to inhibit properly-placed buildings of a similar sort in our town. But I really don't like the idea of the PUDs for this kind of stuff. So anyway, you're asking for everybody's thoughts, that's my thoughts, Joe.
Commissioner Mann?
So I definitely like the idea of talking about it, but we've said multiple times throughout all the ordinance is hey, we spent a lot of time and energy, and a lot of smart people came up with rules, and so when later on down the road, we fall back on those. So if we change something now, right now we're tossing around 50 and 70, but 90, 100 all of a sudden starts to get out of control. So I do think that we should hit it to the subcommittee, do some real thinking about it, and come up with those ideas. If that prevents PUDs, that's a benefit for sure. So I like the idea of talking about it, but I definitely think we need to put a lot of time and energy and thought into what we're deciding, because then it becomes...
Absolutely. That's right. Commissioner Hinckley?
I'm not a fan of a PUD, so I think it's something to discuss. As Mr. Mann stated, I also think it's something we've got to watch things get out of patrol, especially we talked about it, another group comes along 5, 10 years ago, talks about going a little bit higher. So somewhere you've got to set that bar, right? One thing, I don't know how possible this might be, but maybe you set it to where, yeah, you can be at this height, but it has to be booked by a commercial zone of this height. Maybe something like that, so just as an idea.
Commissioner Park?
I think we need to look at it. I'm certainly, I wouldn't say I'm against PUDs. It's just that there are reasons to do PUD, and this is probably not a great one. You want to have an objective level playing field for all developers to play in, and you don't want to have to be in a position of giving this guy an exception and not that guy, and so forth. It's just putting the wrong emphasis on the problem. So anyway, yeah, we should talk about it. There's probably a way to move forward here, so.
I've got very little or nothing to add from that. I think I agree with the general statements that I've heard that Friendswood is running out of those select, great, wide-open spaces for commercial buildings, and it's going to get tougher and tougher to place some of these buildings, and the higher you go, the more economical. But with that said, this is also Friendswood, and we just don't want to go too high. We want to think about it and go into this. What I think I agree with Commissioner Sassen is I'd rather not do a PUD just to change the height. Let's look at this, think about it, and see what we can rewrite an ordinance that works. If somebody has a large enough piece of property, and they can put their building far enough away from residential, then I think that it makes a lot of sense. Okay, good. So is that general feedback good for you, Aubrey, in getting this keyed up with the planning? Sorry, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I might add, if anybody has any ideas, I mean, we're going to go in, the three of us, and then talk about this, but we are open to suggestions on better ways. So you can wait till later and tell us, but it would be more efficient if you tell us early, any clever ideas on how the best way to phrase this thing would be.
I'll add that, I'm sorry, Aubrey. I don't have any ideas. I need to put some more thought to it, but my approach is 40 foot's good. 40, 50 is good enough. Why move it? We start chasing our tail. But that's my starting position. I'll be open-minded here. I just don't support changing it until you guys come up with something clever.
I did put the current ordinance with our changes that we made last year in the backup material, so you have the current copy of how it's written now, as well as those couple of examples. So if y'all have any questions or need any additional information, let us know.
Can I ask a question?
I noticed a pending correction on the church's drawing where 50 was crossed out, now put 40. What is exactly, I mean, they're at 44 feet, I think. And what is the nature? They have a, by what authority are they going above 40?
So under the exception, as long as they meet, so if they're going, I think they're going 45 feet, they have to be setback a minimum of 45 feet from any property line.
Okay, so the 45. Okay, thanks.
And the only feedback I'd give the committee from, and I think I heard it once, but I want to make it clear, to be important to me, is no matter what formula we would look at or consider for how far away you have to be, I still think there needs to be, under no circumstances could it go above X. And maybe it's 40 feet, maybe it's 50, maybe it's 70 feet to match up with what we're doing in downtown. But okay.
Anything else? Okay. Our second discussion item is an update on the Panhandle PUD Zone Change Request, a zone classification change located along FM 2351, consisting of three tracts totaling 34.3288 acres to change from Community Shopping Center and Industrial to a planned unit development. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. So the commission considered this item several months ago. We did forward a negative recommendation to city council. I believe it was a 5-2 vote on that planned unit development for the Panhandle. And so it went to the city council. They had their public hearing, and in their consideration, there was some reservation. They ended up tabling the item, but they requested staff and commission to work with the applicant to figure out if they could do their development and what they wanted under the existing ordinances. So staff went back, and basically we developed a... The applicant sent us, there were six items that they were concerned with and wanted answers to or addressed. And so we had some proposals. We had three commissioners work with us, so Joe, Rich, and Travis. We wanted somebody who did vote for the PUD on the committee of three to help work through this. So we made some proposals and some minor ordinance changes that we could tweak in order to meet their needs, where we could, where we didn't think they were too major. And so all of that was in the report, is in your backup material. It's action items by the commission and action items by the owner. So we met with the owners. We gave them all of that proposal. They reviewed it and came back and asked to change the commons, which is 10 acres to the left of the Timber Creek entrance, to BP, Business Park Zoning District. And then they had additional changes that they wanted us to consider for that zoning district. Ultimately, we went back to the subcommittee, and we were all kind of in agreement that we don't want to start making changes to another, you know, whole other zoning district that doesn't fit the industrial uses and intent of the Panhandle. So we let the applicant know, no, we don't want to make any additional changes. So they have come back and accepted the proposals that we've given them. And so they have also, as of this morning, withdrawn their PUD application. So I appreciate the subcommittee's work on all of that. And so now the real work starts in tweaking our ordinances. But so just to highlight a few of those items. Let me find my list here real quick. I'll just go through them very quickly.
I was in the whispered community use table, if I remember right. I mean, allowing different uses.
Yeah, so uses was one of their major concerns. They wanted to allow some professional attorneys, insurance companies, which the subcommittee, and we'll bring this all back to the full commission for appropriate consideration. But we didn't feel like administrative offices, if you had attorneys for pipeline companies or something, it might be appropriate for them to be located in an industrial zone. So we did have three uses that we were proposing to add for them. I think they came back with one more for insurance agencies. In their response today, they have three more uses that they want us to consider. So we'll get all that to the subcommittee. 621 ambulatory care and services was one of the uses they were proposing. I let them know that I didn't think that was a good idea. I know they had mentioned dentist, but ambulatory includes not just dentists, a lot of uses that I don't really think is appropriate for industrial district. I would prefer that they save those for the front, for their CFC zoning portion. So zoning was one of the other items. So they are going to submit a zone change to change the remainder of Industry Part 2, which if y'all remember, that one is already plotted, and two had a piece of CFC towards downtown. They're going to change that whole tract to industrial. And then the commons, they're going to wait a little bit to see kind of how the market works out on Industry Part 2 before they do anything with that one. So we will be seeing a zone change. Parking was a concern, but they completed a design modification form that's already a process in place. The Community Overlake District was another big one. And so we talked about reducing the COD to 150 feet along 2351 from Beamer to Wandering Trail, which for that industrial part of town, I think it makes sense. Your heart burned over that. Some of the screening and landscaping. Basically, we just asked them to show those items on their plans, and we can work with them for alternate types of screening. Setbacks, really, they were, with their common development, developing the All is One, a lot of the setbacks that they thought applied really didn't apply. And so I think there was some confusion on zero-foot setbacks and things like that. But if they plaid it All is One lot, then their buildings just have to be 10 feet away from each other for fire requirements. So no major changes there. Lighting, they wanted their lighting to be brighter on their interior, which again, interior to the development, we don't have any issues with that. We did come up with some wording, or some possibilities to add some some additional exceptions or criteria in there for, as long as it's a unified development, their lighting could be a little bit brighter interior to the development. We just don't want exterior neighbors to be impacted by their lighting. So those were the major things. And I also appreciate the applicant being patient with us and working through this process with us. And this is just the beginning, so we'll be working with them on this project for a little while and hopefully achieve what they want.
Thank you, Aubrey. As somebody who was on that subcommittee, I think we all recognize that this is a kind of a unique property in Friendswood out there with its history as Oldfield out there. So I think it comes with some unique challenges, lack of residential nearby and sort of thing will make development, maybe like shopping and other things, a little more difficult. So industrial is a really good fit out there. However, I think we had to work really hard to fit what they're trying to do and want to do out there into our existing rules without just throwing out our rules and creating new rules for that area, which we really didn't want to do. We felt we could make it work. I think we had, it sounds like we're very, very close to making it all work within our existing rules with just some minor tweaks to those rules. So I'm very hopeful that we can get this done, because we really would like to see somebody move forward in developing. I was just going to make that overview from as part of the committee. It's a good result in pulling their PUD and working together. I think it's a good sign that we're all now kind of the same path.
Commissioner Perry, you had a comment?
Yeah, just a clarification, you said on the zone change, that request that we'll see down the road here, that will bring industrial all the way to the frontage?
Not all the way, there's still Eagle Transmission, the gas station, yeah, there's a few little parcels between them.
Yeah, okay.
But, there is a leg of the property that does come all the way up to 2351.
Yeah, I'm working on it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Come back to that side. Commissioner Park, you think? Commissioner Hinkle?
I'm just glad to see the clubs come together. I really like the development, I'm going to vote against the PUD, but I do like the development, glad to see it's hopefully moving forward, so.
Commissioner Mann.
Outstanding work by the staff, working back and forth with them, they're adjusting, you're really adjusting, and we're trying to get it to work. So, it's the best thing for the city, and it's following the rules that we already have in place, yet we're still developing out there, we're going to, so fantastic job working with them, and I do think that we're moving in the right direction now, and we're getting real close.
Commissioner Sassen.
Yeah, you stole my thunder. The staff did a just a great job, we went back and forth, there were a lot of creative, durable alternatives looked at here, there was nothing off the table. I like the idea of saying, of reminding the applicant that the area that he's really concerned about, that he understands what he wants to do, let's go on that one, and not try to open the world potentials for everything else when you don't even have clear guidance on what you really want to have there. So, we'll defer that, and we'll be discussing if there are other, what we need to do to make that happen. But outstanding job by the staff, really, I've always been impressed, but this one went over the top.
Thank you.
I have to act of that as well, I should have made my original comments. So, great work, Aubrey, back in, everybody behind you on the team, it's a lot of work, I know, a lot of communication. So, good. Anything else on that discussion item? Okay. Our next item is consideration and possible action regarding future planning and zoning commission dates. Aubrey?
Yes, our next regular meeting will be Thursday, June 10th, and the meeting after that would be this, Thursday, June, which is June 24th.
Communications are next, we'll start with commissioner updates. Do any commissioners have anything that they wish to communicate, suggestions for future agenda items, subcommittee updates, general comments, or updates from liaison assignments? I'll start. Commissioner Perry?
I just want to make one comment, make sure we've got the dates right, I know I've missed some emails, but for those interested, so we've got some public forums for the future land use map, so June 5th at the farmer's market, we'll have booth and personnel there. June 11th, we'll attend Concert in the Park, at least at the beginning of that thing, to make sure that there are questions and to fill comments from the public. Town hall meeting, we will have on June 14, and then we will also have the library display, right, which that will alert people to that foot traffic as well. And this isn't where we end, right, this is just the initial steps. We've got other developer-type meetings that we're going to have to plan as well. So, this is, this is the first thing that we wanted to get out there, to get comments from the public formally. So, that's June 5th, June 11th, and June 14th. So, no other action has been taken on since we last gave that status here and at council.
So, we, our subcommittee did meet, we made a few little tweaks to the map, but, I mean, again, it's just, it's a draft, it's a work in progress. So, Travis and Mark are both going to cover the June 11th and June 14th events. If anybody would like to help with the June 5th, the farmer's market booth, I do need, like, two, probably just two volunteers to help at the farmer's market that morning. So, if anybody's interested in being, just let me know. And so, and just to explain a little bit, we're just going to have a large copy of the map. We're going to have a QR code that you can take a picture of, and it's going to have the map, frequently asked questions, we got to come up with, you know, just explaining why we have this map, why we're updating it, you know, what it is and things like that, and then it'll be a comment box. So, anybody who wants to give feedback can just go onto the site and just fill out their comments, and so we can electronically collect all those comments. So, the display at the library, we have the QR code, so you just take a picture of it, pull up the site, and, you know, give us your input. So, that's the plan on, so if you work, you know, the farmer's market event, just answering basic questions and things like that.
And it's also on the website, too, correct?
The QR, the QR code, yeah.
QR code for the asked questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, a ton of places to go figure this out, but awesome. And then, my other question was going to be, if we cover all the other dates, is the only one you need is June 5th?
Yes.
Good.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sassen?
Okay, so, we have a couple of ordinance things that we're working now, we'd be working on the height ordinance at our first convenience, and our second convenience, we're working on the tree ordinance, which hasn't gone away, and we're close to having wrapped up, I think we're close anyway. You're always close until somebody says, wait a minute, I want to redo it, so, but I think we're close on that. I wanted to recognize Kathy Kerner is here, our soon-to-be sixth commissioner or seventh commissioner. Thanks for coming, it's great, we're happy to hear. And the last thing I was going to do is shout out for our Friendswood High School baseball team, they're having an unbelievable season of undefeated all the way through the season, which, like, 24-0, 25-0, something like that.
Playing right now, 30-0 as of last night.
Yeah, and they've won six playoff games in a row, and so, and they've won last night, and if they win this one, they move on to another round, there are lots of rounds in the baseball, in the high school, Texas high school, but we have cause to be very proud of a historic, what may be a historic season, so, go Friendswood. That's all.
Travis?
I've got my Friendswood baseball.
Oh, no, he got my Kathy Kerner part. So, he's telling the ice.
That's it, nothing else.
I have no update, but I'll check on the June 5th and see if I'm available, I'll let you know.
Same for me, I'm checking on the 5th.
It's an early morning thing, right?
Yeah, it's like 8:00 or 9:00?
They have food.
The farmer's market starts at 9:00.
Oh, 9:00, okay. 9:00 till, like, noon, or?
Uh, 1:00.
9:00 to 1:00, okay.
Yeah.
I'll step back on that as breakfast provided.
Aubrey, you can.
Okay, well, in future meetings, as we get to communications, I'm going to start on that. But, no, Kathy, thank you for coming tonight. We look forward to, as you proposed to city council, and I'm hoping for the best, the mayor and city council, so, thank you. With that, we're going to move next to our council liaison. Normally, it would be council member Graffon, he is not here, but Mr. Mike Foreman, the mayor of Friendswood, has joined us tonight. Anything that you'd like to communicate?
No, I'll come up to the dais if you have questions for me, but Robert's already on his Memorial Day weekend, so, he's there, Trish, your alternate liaison is at the game, and so, you know, you're stuck with me now.
Glad to have you always.
I won't drag the meeting out with any welcome Kathy or any of that stuff, you guys can cover.
Richard already did that.
Covered it well.
All right, extremely good. Okay, now, next are staff updates, thank you. Aubrey?
So, the DRC report for April was in your backup material, because we didn't meet the first meeting in May, so I'm a little bit off on that. So, DRC report's in your backup material. Also, the Tech dot sidewalks, curbs, and ramps program should be starting next week, yay, the contractor's going to start on that.
Construction?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes. So, with that, the conduit for the future downtown lights will be installed by the contractor as well. Tech dot let us piggyback on their project to go ahead and install the conduit for future lighting. That is also including the six intersections with the new black powder-coated traffic lights, or traffic signal arms, so they'll do away with all the wirespan lights for all six of our intersections downtown, so. They should be, they're saying they'll be done by December, so I'm excited to see that project come forward. Tech dot's also going to be doing some bridge repairs throughout the city, and then the traffic light at Leisure Lane should be installed here in the next few months as well, or that project started very soon. I think they've been doing some survey and precursory work for that project, so. And I think we need it, because summer mood opened, and summertime is here, and it's busy, so hopefully that traffic light will help alleviate some of those traffic concerns of the day.
Right, and I appreciate all the times that you go over there just to check the traffic coming out of the traffic lane.
I know, right?
Becky, you think?
Yes, sir, we do have a couple of the ordinance changes that are drafted and going to be reviewed, we'll set up another meeting to start looking at this height ordinance, so I'll contact the subcommittee. And then, we do have a zoning board of adjustment application that came in, so we haven't met in a really long time, I don't think we met at all in 2020, so the end of June, once, so the end of June that we will meet, but I will copy the commission on all that correspondence, that way you can stay informed, or if you want to come visit, observe, you can do that.
Great, thank you. Mary Kay, you think?
Just have a happy, safe holiday weekend.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, with that, the May 27th, 2021 planning and zoning regular meeting is now adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming this evening.